We might call our meeting to order tonight. I want to take this time to welcome everyone here, welcome our guests. We have a pretty short agenda, but we have some time intended for me to have some discussion. I'm going to give our invocation, and then I'm going to ask Francis to give us some replies.
Lord, thank you for this day and this opportunity. I want to represent our seat and thank you for what you do for us in the Lord's hands. As you tend bless Hamilton, thank you for all you do for us through your Lord and Esther. As you bless each citizen that's being born, I pray to be able to be with those who are less fortunate than we are, those who've lost their lives today and watched them, or just be with families. If you would, I would continue to bless our seat and all these things we have to encourage.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on our agenda, and that's recommendations to approve the minutes from our last meeting. It's there, and recommendations to approve those meetings.
I like a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? I'll in favor say aye. I'm going to skip number two and go to number three right here. It's a recommendation to contract Lanzler Owen for $10 for our research annexations ordinances. What she's doing is going back and finding, Jane, you might help me explain this better, but all of our annexation notices back to 70s?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven. Researching those for us. So we'll have a better idea of what we have, so we can move forward. Things we need to know, she's doing that research for us in the old minute books, is that right?
Right. And the ordinance book.
Ordinance book, that's right.
She's actually getting it from both places.
The old ordinance book that we have that goes back?
Ordinances book stopped in 93, but they're in the minutes from there on.
All the ordinances that are minutes anyway, forever, they're always out there.
The reason it's 1977 was that it was as far back as some previous part-time employees had made a law. I had them to go through the minute books and law of annexation, well, all the ordinances. And that was as far back as they went. Scott thought that was far enough back to start with.
And White tried to explain to me, I questioned the MUNI code and how almost complete it was and why they couldn't just punch it in and spit all these ordinances out, so we wouldn't have to go through all these. But White tried to explain to me that not all ordinances are handled through MUNI code.
Right. So... The ordinances that will be codified are ordinances that can be enforced, like, you know, the animals, traffic fines, the MM.
Like litter around?
Yeah, something that can be, you know, like...
Alcohol mill codes.
Yeah. Annexation ordinances would not be codified, like annexed in property or...
Well, I was just under the impression that MUNI code was going to go through the entire minute book, like all the ordinances, all the ordinances. And then that way, if anybody had a question about anything, they could just go to the computer, they could type it in, and it would pull up everything, but obviously I'm wrong.
Well, you, there's not a need to put an ordinance, there's not a need to pay them money to codify ordinances that can't be enforced, like annexed in land, so I'm saying.
I could see that if there was an ordinance book, if somebody could just flip through, but if, I mean, if they were in MUNI code...
There is an ordinance book through 1993.
Right, and I'm not arguing with you, I'm just saying that I was confused as to exactly what MUNI code was going to do. So anybody else that was under that impression also, that, I mean, we could look up anything, that's not exactly what it's going to be.
No, no, that's not the way. All cities that have their ordinances codified are ordinances that can be enforced, those type. For easy reference, for police officers, for citizens to go and see what would apply to them, you know, annexed in property or changing someone's zoning.
Does apply.
They apply, but there's not a... The zoning ordinance will be in there, but not each time that you vote, have an ordinance to change someone's, how they're zoned from R1 to whatever, that would, there would be no need in paying to have that. None of that, there's nothing to be enforced there.
So when Angela pulls these and everything gets out, are they going to be put in a book, all their own? So when there is a question?
That's for y'all to decide what you're going to do after that. How far are y'all going to go, that y'all wish to go with it? You wish to pay attorney or whomever to go to the courthouse and research all this?
It's a long, drawn-out process.
Long, drawn-out process.
Would that be on file at the public judge's office anyway?
Well, see, there's some discredency, some people that's paying city tax, but they're not showing on the mail. You know, that's verified.
But I mean, to show, for it to be somewhere...
It should be.
It should be, but it could not...
Do you have to compile it if it, in theory, if it's already on file at the public judge's office, or somewhere?
It could be that in the past, it was not recorded.
In the past, but I mean, once this is all cleaned up, which I would think for all that's cleaned up...
That's what we're trying to do.
Then it would be somewhere, the question is, would it be somewhere to be able to run that?
It's going to be a long, expensive process.
Yeah, yeah.
This is not, this is not something that just, that just happened, that we just became aware of overnight. We've known for years that there were problems with the, with the city limits.
And not just us, other cities, but I know former city clerk knew that we had issues. So I guess my question is, when Angela does all this, and we get all this pool, then we can vote to say, from this point forward, everything that's annexed in will be kept in this book and also in the minute books, so if there's any questions, you won't have to flip through the minute books, you'll just go to the, whatever this...
Well, I can see the majority of annexations happened up to 93.
Hasn't been happening in the last several years.
Most of them, you're going to find in that ordinance book. I know since, you know, since I've been here, we've just, and I started in 96, there's been very few.
I'd like a motion with contrast to Ms. Owen for $10. Thank you.
I second.
Any other discussion? I'll in favor say aye. Number four is a recommendation to approve a $500 contribution to Safe Place. This is very important for our community and great service, and it's something we gave forward, gave actually the last year, previous mayor council gave a $500 contribution on 9/5/12. And this is something they're asking for, to help them with their financial. Says Safe Place opened its doors over 32 years ago to make a difference in the lives of families whose homes are single, most dangerous placement in the wheel. Our program has grown from a small facility to a comprehensive program. This really helps a lot of people, and it goes on to say, local government, strata serviced area, provide vital funding that provides significant source of money used to match the grants that have paid these services. They use our money to help get grants, and it also helps a tremendous amount of people. Marion County alone in 2012 was 210 people. So it's a, it's a good outreach for our city, and it's my recommendation to continue to support it.
I'd like a motion with a contribution to it.
Thank you, Francis. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Any other discussion? I'll in favor say aye. Number five is a recommendation to hire Paige Box as a temporary part-time employee at the Recreation Center at a rate of $7.25 an hour. Effective hire date will be 9/20/13. Larry, you're here, you're part-time, the reason you're asking because you're part-time, the help you have now is the last day, is this Friday?
The last day is tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay. So actually, she's just...
She will pay, she'll take over until Thursday.
She's just replacing, she's not adding?
She's replacing one, going on.
So is there a recommendation to...
I'd like aye.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Any other discussion? I'll in favor say aye.
How many part-time do you have today?
Four like that, Francis, I've got two outside and four inside. They work on weekends and three to six, six to nine shift.
But all total?
The four, the four of those dudes.
I thought you said inside?
I've got two that works outside, that's the ground here.
Okay, fine.
At this time, I'm going to ask Kurt Hankins if he would come. Kurt, give us an update on the revitalization, how it's going with construction and where we're at. So you can come up here, I've got a microphone for you.
I got a microphone.
If you don't care. I figured you liked that.
I'm very happy with my microphone.
I appreciate you coming.
Yes, sir. Chambers everywhere. All right, the downtown revitalization is going well. We have made quite a little bit of mess in town, as you may have noticed. But the contractors have been doing a good job of putting things back. They're going in, making the holes, putting the storm sewer in, and putting them back. We did have a little bit of change in the sequence of construction. There was a push to go ahead and get the storm sewer in. When Ballard got in town and started talking to the merchants and some of the other folks in the downtown area, they expressed to him the concerns they had over the storm sewer. Some of them explained, you know, why they had been in their building, that kind of thing. He made a concerted effort, has made a concerted effort to go ahead and get that in first, so that if we do get a rain event, that'll hopefully be taken care of with that. He's probably about 75, 80% done with the storm sewer. We've got, I believe we've got eight more inlets to stake out tomorrow, and then he'll get those in over the next week or two. And then most of, then the storm sewer will pretty much be in. You have, if you've noticed, he has left, he has left sidewalks through most of the downtown area. We're just tearing up in the, in the parking areas and just busting a little bit of sidewalk where we need to, to put the inlet in. So he's doing a good job leaving, you know, walkability throughout town. But I just, we just did the quantities today, he just turned in a new estimate for this month. He is 18% done, he's used 18% of his days, he's that far into his contract, and his estimate is 22% complete, so we're...
Pretty much on schedule.
Pretty much right on schedule. Now, the weather has cooperated tremendously with us for the past two months. We don't necessarily expect that trend to continue. So, you know, when we do get into days where it gets rainy and wet and yucky, and as we move forward too, you know, when it starts getting too cold to pour concrete, you know, there'll be days throughout the winter when it's too cold to pour concrete. So, you know, there would be some slowdown as we move through the winter months, but for right now, I'm very pleased with this progress. Haven't really had any complaints. I've had a few concerns, we've, I think we've addressed most of those, unless there's some I don't know of. I don't think I have anybody to upset with it. We've just, they've just nearly completed the intersection here at the school. Have you seen the colored concrete and the crosswalks there? The papers, I believe, are on site, they should start laying those this week. They're going to get finished on the, finished on the inlets here on Fourth Avenue. They get those finished up this week with the concrete. And the, the plan is, we still haven't, excuse me, still haven't confirmed that, but the plan is to try and find somebody to come in and do a little asphalt work on either side of that concrete, so that, and also the patching work down here on Fourth Avenue, so that Fourth Avenue will be done, and all paved back and everything, as we move forward. Any questions?
What is the plan for the homecoming parade?
Where, where does the homecoming parade, I don't know where the homecoming parade normally goes.
It generally comes right up here to the intersection, that is where the papers are going. It turns to layup, it goes all the way down into her...
You're going to move one block this way.
Okay.
We'll come out if y'all want, let's...
There you go.
Still go in the same direction?
Yes. I need a reverse Christmas. Reverse. You understand?
I understand.
That's good.
I'll tie my clothes up like Christmas clothes.
Okay, all right, okay. I'm learning.
Okay.
I'll know before you're... Concern, for the merchants that want to know, and while we've got you on camera, can you tell us? We are trying to be very, I don't know the right word, but conscious, good one, of what we're doing, not to hurt their business at all. We still want people to be able to get in, get out, park, and try not to close too much at one time. What I'd like to do is encourage people to still shop, and don't worry, still go, their stores are still open. You won't have to walk any further. When you park uptown, if you have to walk an extra block than you would if you went to Wal-Mart, if you went to the grocery store, it won't be any further as far as footage. Now, you may have to walk through a block, it's temporarily closed, but the stores are still open, and we just need to encourage people, and our business owners, you know, that we're not... We know this is going to be a long, tedious thing. So anything you can say that might ease their minds?
Well, you know, there is a, there's a provision in the contract with Ballard that they have to maintain, what we call walkability throughout the life of the project, which means that, you know, even if they tear up a sidewalk, they have to put something back so you can walk across it. As they tear up parking areas, they have to put that back, so you can park there again. And I was just down there a few minutes ago, before the meeting started, and checking, last time I was here, last Thursday, I think it was, that from the courthouse back a block was, was closed, but it was back open again.
They got open this afternoon.
Yeah, areas, you can park back in them again. So, you know, we're trying to, you know, if you come into town and something's blocked off, give us a day or two, you know, we'll get the work done and get out of the way, and you can come back and park in your same spot again.
And when they start tearing the sidewalks out, they're probably going to try not to take too much out that can't put back in place.
Right.
But once they get up toward the buildings?
When we get to the buildings, yeah, we've gone, we've, we're still formulating the exact plan with the contractor and working. But the good news is we're starting on the south end, so we're learning as we go, as far as how long it takes to do things. We learned a lot on the plaza, on the south end, that we'll use when we get to the plaza at the courthouse. But, yeah, as far as the businesses are concerned, we may, they may come up, like, close to their door one day and then get that poured back, and then there'll be a day or so where they're right in front of the doors torn out, but they'll get that poured back as soon as they can, and then move on to the next section. So they're just, it's just a, you know, process of tearing out and putting back. Takes a few minutes, but they'll, of course.
So if they just have one entrance, are they going to tell them a few days in advance, hey, we're going to be right in front of your door today, and you need to...
You'll still be able to get in the door. You know, there'll, there'll be rock, you know, there'll be rock or piece of plywood or something.
So when they pour the concrete, are they going to put the plywood over it, so you can...
There may be a few hours where you can actually walk. But hopefully, we'll do that in an afternoon, or, you know, toward an afternoon, or early morning or something, you know, in the afternoon. But, yeah, yeah, short of the time, although that concrete's actually poured and given it a few hours to cure before you can walk in, you know, then you'll be able to walk when it's torn up and that kind of thing. But we don't want that to last very long. Tear it up one day, put it, put it poured back the next day.
Is there a way, I'll leave a light in, Rod, as usual. There's, of course, when you had changes, and I think a lot of people understand why change, you know, things to get the sewer, it made sense. But there was, I think there was still some element of surprise. There's been some talk in the past few days, maybe of even just, even if, on a weekly basis, if sort of a cryptic email was sent out to just say, well, this is what we're planning to do this next week, there has to be some change, then that, that could be sent out to the businesses real quick, to the chamber, whatever, and that just sort of keep them in the loop without having to go in the long, dry thing, but just sort of give them a heads up on, here we are for the week, and what we're... Is that something of a possibility, or...
Yeah, that's a, that's a definite possibility. You know, a lot of times, you know, they think they're going to get this much accomplished, and they don't, or they get even more accomplished than they thought they would. That's been the case actually so far on the storm sewers, they, as they progress north, they've actually sped up a little faster than they thought they would. So they've, they've gotten, they've kind of surprised themselves, I guess, in a way. They've gotten further than they thought they would at this point. Of course, the weather's been very cooperative, like I said. But, yeah, I think that we could, we could probably do that if that's something that the...
If you send it to me, I'll forward it to a chamber. If anybody else needs it.
Mayor?
Yes.
We have an email that we have set up, Chamber has set up, that's specifically for our downtown merchants. So it would just be a, simply get forward to go out to all of them. And to go along with, with what Ed was mentioning earlier, I think the element of surprise with some of the businesses, because of some of the changes in plans as far as blocking off entire blocks, you know, I think the fact is, it's what we're hearing in the chamber offices, yes, the merchants are happy that we're on schedule, and maybe even a little bit ahead of schedule, but the concern is, is what they had been told earlier is not exactly what has been the plan. And I understand what you said, you know, about, yes, you know, learning as you go, that kind of deal, and hopefully that will help in, you know, as you move literally up the street. But I just think if we could have a little bit better communication between the contractor, you guys, the city, Chamber, whoever, so we can, we can better make our merchants aware, because, you know, end of this thing in 270 days, we want to still have our merchants in town. And we have, you know, we have had at least one say that, you know, if these blocks are going to continue to be blocked full block at one point, they don't know if they're going to be here at the end of this. So, you know, our understanding was originally that, you know, it's going to be blocked down the, what we call the yellow line, the middle of the street. And that changed, and it wasn't the fact that that was a bad thing necessarily, because it was only for a short period of time, it's just it caught them unexpectedly. So I think if we can just improve that communication that we have, I think that will alleviate a lot of nervousness on behalf of the merchants. And like I say, that way, if they have a question, they can directly, you know, contact you, or you can get with Mr. Ballard or whatever, because we all know, you know, there's going to be ebbs and flows, and, you know, things are going to change with the weather, and, you know, but we just, you know, we want to maximize, you know, the communication between everyone, so that we're all on the same page. I think just to have everybody on the same page and have a good idea of what's, like I say, because there may be weeks that they're ahead of time, or weeks that they get behind on whatever project. So, but, Mayor, like I said, we've got an email that will go straight out to all the downtown merchants, and we'll be glad to do that for you.
And in fairness to Kurt, as you said, that block was opened up at the sports gallery area, you know, they had to cut that off, that block off, quit it for a while. That was reopened up by the weekend, as you say.
Right. And like I say, we don't want to put a burden on any business, because, yes, we do all of them here. At the end of this project, and more to come, and then that's why we're doing it. So we're going to survive this thing together, and it's going to be something that we'll, we'll encourage everybody at every meeting to continue to support our downtown merchants, and to continue to go shop with them. Because the next few months, Christmas coming up, will be some of their biggest revenue for the year. So we will encourage everybody to still to support them. If you have to walk on a board to get to the front door, walk on a board, get to the front door. You know, I swear I'll do it.
The length shouldn't be too long.
Shouldn't be too long. You know, we're, they're very conscious of it, and done a very good job of trying, so we just got to get through this together, and I encourage everyone to continue to shop. And thank you for keeping me updated. I, I talk to them every day. Every day I go in and I look and talk to them. You and I have contact every couple of days, and we'll make sure that we pass the word at each meeting. You know, we meet twice a month, and we might get you to come once a month the next few months, and just kind of give us something, but...
I do that, you know, when I come about once or twice a week to town, and usually the first thing I say to them is, what have you got locked, and when are you going to get it open? And the last thing I say when I leave is, when are you going to get it open? So I do this.
And I think that would be a good idea, next time, when, when you come back, if we have a little heads up, and maybe the Chamber can send out an email so that all the downtown merchants can be here, and if they have any specific questions, then you'll be here, and, and everybody can hear the question, and everybody can hear the answer.
Yeah, big idea.
Thank you, Kurt.
Sure.
Hang around when I walk with you uptown. I don't have anything else on the agenda, but I know Ms. Boss has a couple of questions she'd like to ask.
First of all, you are all sane. I do not want you to talk. I would not, you could not aid me enough to fool with somebody like me. But my neighbors, a lot in the neighborhood, have come to me because they knew that I would stand up and speak. First of all, we got so much garbage going down Third Avenue, that, and it's coming from the station on the corner. Now, they're not doing it. They do a real good job of keeping their lot clean, but maybe they could put another garbage can out front or something, because I'm tired of going out and picking up garbage, and so is the rest of the street. Going to play, that's the problem. Oh, the next thing is they asked me to ask you, now, don't anybody throw any tomatoes. How lucky is this zoning business costing? What a ballpark figure of what it's costing?
I don't have a ballpark figure in that, you know, we...
Well, whatever it is, it might be better spent fixing the water in this town. It is a pitiful mess. When I walked by my sink, I almost had to hold my nose. The water is that bad. And I had one neighbor tell me, when they took a bath last night, they didn't rinse the tub out right away, and this morning they had to scrub all the sand and stuff out of the bottom. That, there's no sense in that. I can't afford $8,000 or $9,000 to put a filter on my house either. And, and then, like I said, the zoning cost of the water is altogether. And the last thing they told me to tell y'all was, if you were running for an election today, you would not get their vote because you have opened a can of worms, and you're not able to put that lid back on it.
The can of worms from what, James?
On the zoning business. You got a lot of unhappy people out there. I mean, really unhappy people. Now, I'm okay where I'm at, but I know a lot of people that are not, and they're afraid to say anything. Well, I'm not, if I get out of hand, she can take me on the jail, because I've already called and made arrangements for somebody to come get me out. But I think that's where I end up. But that's just, you know, I'm glad that I am able to speak and bring those things to y'all. You need to be aware of what the citizens are thinking. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. This zoning is not costing us anything more than if we hadn't been going through this the last month and a half. I mean, it's not costing anything extra.
Yeah, but what was the initial?
I'm not sure that, I don't know that they paid any names for it.
We paid NACOC, you know, so much a year, and Nathan Ringham, who comes from NACOC...
We're just trying to make it where it's better for everybody.
It's, it's been in such a mess and brought to our attention that it needs to be improved upon, and I think you've got people here that will agree with that, and that's all we're trying to do, is just make it better. I know it's...
There was no special fee to NACOC to do all that?
No.
I'm thinking of the legal fee that eventually let me, when they put it in the newspaper. We don't know what that is, because we don't know how long it's going to be, but I don't know if...
Are you going to give us a grant, kind of thing?
I suppose, Les Walters will... Oh, Les will let you do it for free, just, you know, Les, he'll just let you do it for free. I'm kidding, but, but they'll, they'll... But, but they'll, they'll try to do what we can. But I don't know what the, I'm trying to think of what other cost there could be.
Jan, I can tell you, but I don't know of any. Do you know of any something else?
I have to research it. I know legal fees. I just have to go back.
Well, Mayor, give everybody in this room notes. You don't get something for nothing. And if anybody's trying to sell you that bill of goods, you better run. Because it's gonna cost you in the long run. So there's something being paid somewhere to someone.
Well, it hasn't been yet. I put it like that. It has not been yet. So we do have deals from NACOC. They do tremendous amount of work for the cities. It doesn't cost us a dime. That's what they do. Those cities, all of them, rather than I'm gonna pay them.
We're paying them.
And use that funds to do those things. So I like to say, as far as zoning goes, like I said, we're doing the very best we can to make this simpler. When we get it done, it'll be as simpler, people may not like it, but so will.
Then you'll have the can of worms-
We may have. But the can of worms is already open and we're trying to make it better. And that's all I'm gonna say.
Has that issue about your water down that street been addressed?
Oh, goodness. It has been. I think the first or second meeting I talked to y'all about it.
Well, I know, but have there been any? When's the last time any new lines were put in down through there or not?
I've been comparing.
How long has it been since, is it, is it old lines? Is it, do you know what it is? Rodney here? Lynn, you know?
I work fine.
Mine's, mine's-
I have no idea how long it's been. All I know is I don't like my water and I don't have eight thousand dollars to put a filter to just follow my house.
We're gonna talk, I'll be back fast.
I just wanted to point out that when I mentioned about the legal, the, the legal cost is like per word. You know, that's why, and so that's why we can't say how much we're going to- We'll, we'll try to help y'all out the best as we can on the legal ad. But until they get it finalized, then we can't tell you how much the, the legal ad's gonna be. But we'll work with y'all as best as we can. But that's, I can't say.
You don't, I have to check.
I don't, I, I just write the little words and then I leave finances to somebody else. I don't even sell subscriptions, so thankfully, I'm out of that.
Fox Six guy got the weather cam up last week.
That's right, him and Wes Gray talked about that. He was very instrumental in getting that Fox's cam up at the courthouse and grid cameras.
Well, they just-
It started a few months ago and-
Yeah, it started several months ago.
Back in February.
The, they finally got, you know, they had some trouble with their old cameras. They got their new cameras in and sent their installation guys up and they spent about a day and a half up here. It's up and running. James Paul Dyson, I think he's already showed it a couple of times. And I think that'll be a benefit for the city, you know.
You know anything where any storms or anything come, they'll be able to show that too?
They said that's the most far north camera that they've got, you know, is, is here. And it's a real high-definition camera too. They're, they're very pleased to have it up here. I'm glad they've got it, you know. The only other thing I wanted to say was, y'all continue to remember Slappy, you're in your prayers. It's Bob, Paige, Miss Sue's grandson, and he's, you know, I think he's doing better today, but he needs prayers. Y'all continue to remember him. He's just had a lot of health problems here the last month or so.
One other thing I'd like to miss before I ask for most adjournments is parking uptown is difficult now with construction, some of the roads are being closed. I'd like to encourage, if they will, before we really try to enforce it online, but to encourage people to let parking places be open for customers. There's still a lot of folks, parking around the courthouse could be employees or somebody. But as this goes on, there's gonna be less parking for a while, on the street or two at a time. And we need to leave those parking open as much as we can for people doing business in the courthouse and people shopping in town. Because they need it. They need it desperately bad. Over the next few months, there'll be people paying fees and permits and business license and paying their land taxes and things like that. So we need to try to leave as many parking spots open for people coming in to have to do business around the courthouse and merchants. So I know that's been a problem for years about parking. And when this is completed, we may get really more serious about parking. But right now, we've been pretty lenient. But we really will encourage people, they work around the courthouse, you're in the courthouse, to park some more apps and walk, so we leave the spots open.
Well, in that revitalization, it should ensure us, what was it, Kurt? About sixteen more parking places there about? So that's gonna help.
Yes, ma'am, we'll, we'll get it served.
Having one way straight and diagonal rather than parallel.
Right, at first, first avenue. You have anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I like a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.